Good.
Yeah, he told a lot of us. Um, he did two hours for a few of them.
But any indication how this meeting goes? The car.
The money for that.
All expedition run hot, but in the parking lot, so.
Oh, good.
Hope that's not a sign.
That's another question I want to ask. I don't think I'll be able to raise that.
Oh, well, probably just it.
It's kind of like.
Probably.
We need years to make a little water.
And for the animal children. He's got a leak somewhere that.
Exactly. And then they're going to call.
Right.
Yeah. Um, but I'm there. When I can go on the project or something, I would have a really long charge. Um, but if it is, it's how it helps off then.
Yep.
I kind of got it. And then you said, but.
That's something about me.
That's another conversation that we had, but I.
Hey, I'm good. How are you? I know. I didn't come up there. I feel like I'm alone back here. I walked down. That's your eyes. I don't just say that. Back row, back.
This is where we're at. Good, Steve. Joe, is it time out?
So.
A really long.
I hear this.
Uh.
Um.
Why would you want that? That country.
Okay. You're, you're. Maybe a lot. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, um.
So I think tax assessment.
I'm.
The baby. Tax. Then a thing. I said.
Revenue. Revenue.
For. Blue. Let's see. So it goes with this.
Okay. Luckily, we get.
I put a copy of these in there. Just that one liner down the line. So. Yeah, it showed you all that.
Right. Good.
As a combination, that's what I was saying. I'm right now. Would lower than fifteen years.
I know. I think I made a better decision. Just like we.
This is. Okay.
The picture that I was trying to get on.
What the influence was. That's the.
Yeah. Yeah, this is a better request. I'm playing this. I don't look at. So when I was calling, I was like, oh, take a look. Hold on. I don't. We're on my.
Just.
So now, see, I've got a type of what we improved. Like a. For this year.
Yeah.
I mean, I've.
Blue, she's, that's where she's talking. She's like, whatever. Here, you gotta do this, do that. Come on. Get with it.
Are you happy about the value? Do you want to? Which is more, if you need that. No, I've got. If.
Keep them in line.
No, try to. I don't know. They keep both in line. They're.
I know. I know. I can tell that. I live.
Yeah, they don't play around.
I know my mother-in-law. I know exactly how she is. If you were to tell her that. I'll be glad to. I'll deny that. I said.
I will. I will never tell your secret.
Right. I will deny. I used.
Totally.
I mean. Mentally and all is good. He just can't get around. She got it. I mean, uh. He's better than me, man. I can't get around him. I'm not.
Can't get him. Can't get around. Can't get him.
That's right. Not necessarily mentally good, you know? If he's mentally cute, he can, he can, he can. Keep me going over his to-do list while he's laying up in the. Well, yeah. Say it. I could. Yeah. You rebuilt that truck yet? I mean, you know. I could, uh.
Yeah.
It's all good.
Yeah. I got, I got some good news for you. We got an elderly lady in our church. She has, actually, it's in Carver. And a kneecap of blue. She lived a hundred and four. There you go. Get around this bad. Every now and then her, even her big pop out. Everybody just push back. Straighten that leg back.
Oh. There you go. But it will, will wear you down. Yep.
But how do you get it?
Mom, I'd go. When she was in existence, it was my job to go and take her Sunday dinner, which consisted of, um, Popeyes, a leg, an extra leg, with red beans and rice for lunch and very rice for dinner. And, and you know, I'm going in and I'm like, sir, one day, I forget what the reason was, but I was in a fifteen minutes line. And it was just like, where have you been? What have you been doing? And, uh, what? Which got. That's why.
Well, I don't know. You make a different power than you were.
No.
Makes you know.
Get it when it. Get it. I can never get it, but it was back.
Long life, my two sisters too. That takes a root. It's a blood problem. Did you know? For me to do that? Absolutely.
I don't be doing no engineering. You don't be doing no blood.
I found a burko in Vietnam. I didn't work. I went to Burnco. There you go. What day? Friday. That's Friday. Hello, we're going to be rolling. That's my Friday home. All time. I know what you live. I don't want to leave you by the fire. My sister's called. What's it called? Like. I ain't sure. She said this with a lot of water here. Like, can you? Oh, no. You do that really like, cut it off and call it one. And all I want. Is if your plumber shows up, I'll go on it this week. Do not call me. Luckily, we're just starting to expand things.
Oh, boy. Something on the way. She's on the way.
Okay. There he is. That one after that. Right. Yeah. I can't believe I'm coming forward doing that. Us is just crazy. It is what it is. Mm-hmm. Anyway.
All right. I appreciate everybody coming to Mass County Board of Commissioners Budget Work Session. Uh, it is now four of six P M. June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three. Anyone have any questions or remarks on today's agenda? I hear none. We'll discuss twenty-two forty-four budget requests. Robin Baker up first, buddy. Probably valuation.
Yay.
Yay.
Because what we're calling tax assessment sheet. You know, property valuation sounds much better.
It sounds a lot better to the public.
Yeah, I know.
Uh. So where we get on the story?
Well, Susan gave us right before we walked in, the actual copy. Because most of these are as of today. They're probably over there. Yeah. Because you'll notice all the blue and white copies are not an actual test. Um, I guess just, just do line by line, Rob. Make it easier.
Okay. Well, we can, we can skip everything up here that is out of our control, out of Medicare, social security and all that stuff.
Correct.
We have no control over that. Uh. So the legal professional attorney, that's Mike. We don't have anything budgeted for that. Professional services, this is our personal property audit.
Um, let's see. Wait, the, the, on the actual call that we're showing, this, is this your date?
That's, uh, on, on my sheet, I don't, I don't have the same sheet I'll do. So I'm not sure.
Okay, no, this is not.
It's got, it's got a column says twenty-two actual.
Yeah, that's. Yeah. That's the way it.
Year twenty-twenty-two, that was the actual number spent. We don't have a twenty-three actual.
Okay, gotcha. Yes, I'll leave you with your.
Yes.
So that one was, no, the professional services, twenty-three, four, forty-five. Is that what you're showing?
In twenty-two.
Yeah.
Right, for the twenty-two actual.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the, that's the personal property audit with trailer business services. That's what we paid out to them for twenty-two. Um. And the maintenance contract, that's our, uh, Athens Digital for our copy unit.
All right, before you, before you move on though, let's go ahead and finish that line out.
Okay.
Um, so you have a zero under twenty-four request, and I went down to Robin's office a while ago. And I asked, I, this will be on the new documents. Y'all may want to pencil in. But I told him to put forty-five thousand there because we know trailer business services is in, uh, the beginning processes now of, uh, the retail audits. We know that there's eighty-eight locations and we, the estimated cost for that is going to be around forty-five thousand. So whether we end up paying it out this year, we don't know when they're going to get done. But it looks like they're going to roll into twenty-four before we'll actually pay that bill and to keep them having to amend the budget and come back to go ahead and put that forty-five thousand in the twenty-four budget. So instead of that zero there, uh, pencil in a forty-five thousand right there.
Right, because that's the way I pay the eight retail, uh, businesses. That's what we sent to trailer for retail audit. They, they have sent letters out to the retail businesses and now they're sending us another batch of letters to send out to the businesses to set up a time for them to come for a meeting with trailer business to actually do the audit. Um, when they get to that, we don't know. We may end up paying something this year. Depends on what the bill is. A lot of it, I think, is going to be out of next year's budget.
Robin, the other line item was the, the third one down, the tax assessment board. I know you emailed with, I know I'd email Mike about it.
Yeah. Uh, I don't know what Mike said, and the reason I put that in there is because it is our, uh, tax assessment board and they've been at the same salary, I know, for the past fifteen years with no increases. Um. That was the reason for my request on the tax assessment board.
Uh, Mike did confirm that that was our decision. There was no state minimum uh, above what ACCG's minimum is, and that's really where they've been for fifteen years, at ACCG's minimum.
Yeah.
And he did tell me that most surrounding counties does pay anywhere between eleven and fifteen and sixteen thousand of counties our size. So twelve-nine is not unprecedented around our area.
Okay. Um, then we'll, we'll jump back down to the, uh, the software. That's all, that's not going to be in our budget this year. And I don't think it was supposed to be in our budget last year. There was an issue with the accounting last year. Hannah accidentally paid it out of our budget. Missed it was supposed to correct it and take it out of I T and remove it from our budget. She actually charged our budget twice for it for five thousand and it, that's where it ended up being fifty-seven, seventy-two. But it was supposed to be zero. Hannah just paid it out of ours. It was supposed to have gone to asset to be paid out of their budget. So our, our budget should be zero. Um, cell phones. We, I don't know how much we pay for cell phones every month because we don't handle that. We don't pay, we don't make that payment.
I put it out there in the comments for you. Because I, we went, looked it up, what is coming in off of the little worksheet every month.
You only have two phones, doesn't it?
You only have two.
We have two. Bill, yeah, Bill Fraser's have county phones.
Which that will need to increase on down the other line items.
With an extra question.
Correct.
Um, postage and mailing fees, that's only because our, then, our vendor that we use to send out our personal property returns and our notices have increased the mailing. And I think I, I did add a sheet on there showing that they have increased it by point zero five five per. Um. Um, and we have a little over seventeen thousand notices and about eight or nine hundred personal property returns. Advertising stays the same every year. That's just when we advertise for physicians. And printing and binding, that's all part of the Harris. Uh, travel food and lodging. The reason for that increase is during COVID, all of our people got behind on their training during COVID because the Department of Revenue was scheduled classes and then they were canceled classes because they didn't want people to come to in-person training. They did house some, uh, virtual training, but that was filled up so quick that it was hard to get anybody into the virtual training. So until we get all the appraisers and the board of assessors back on track with their training, we have to have that line increased. Once we get back on track with bringing it back down. And, uh, the travel food and lodging and education and training, those two go together because when we, when we do schedule someone for training, we have to provide them with a hotel room to stay for, wherever the training is available. Deers, the deers are our, um, uh, cost manuals for residential and commercial. We pay, um, outside firm who, who sends us the manuals and we use those to support our values. We don't use those to set our values. We just use those to support our values, which they are very important. And they're six hundred dollars. I think it's three fifty for the commercial and two fifty for the residential manual. Filing fees, those are all COVs. So that changes every year depending on how many COVs we get in. But if we take twenty-five dollars in, we turn that twenty-five dollars over to the general fund and then as we file them with the clerk of Superior Court, we request a check for those COVs that were filed with the clerk. So we should start with a zero and end with a zero. Office supplies, our office supply are always sixty-five hundred and we try to use as little as we have to on office supplies. Uh, even with the twenty-twenty-two actual, we used less than three thousand dollars. So we're not being exorbitant with it. We just want to make sure that if there is something that we may have to buy, that we have money to purchase it.
Now, according to your actuals on your year, fifty-six hundred on the sheet that we just received on office supplies.
Um.
Am I correct, Susan? Fifty-six, eighty-one?
Well, maybe now.
No, that's what the remainder.
Oh, that's your remainder. You only spent eight eighteen.
Yeah. Eight hundred and eighteen is what.
Oh, for twenty-three.
Yeah.
For twenty-three, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, my, uh, my total for twenty-two showed twenty-eight, fifty-three.
Okay. Explain on the sheet that you handed us, what percentage of the year is this represented?
Say it again.
What percent of the year, I believe?
Um, for revenue, I didn't front revenue, but.
Well, just, just percent of the year with.
Okay.
Forty-seven or fifty?
Yeah. So if you look at the bottom of this sheet that I gave you guys, over here, the percentage where, where that department's sitting now is forty-eight.
That's the actual.
That, that, yeah.
Calendar, calendar wise, where are we?
Yeah. Yeah, forty-eight percent.
So where forty-eight percent of the?
Of the budgeted amount.
That's what I'm saying. What are we, what percent of the calendar year are we? The budget year are we?
Well, this will be, he's about on target, about fifty percent because of twelve months, we're at, we're at.
You just call.
Yeah.
The reason I ask that question, there are, there are several these that were at roughly fifty percent, there's a hundred fifty-seven, a hundred forty-eight, a hundred one. Are those because all of those are typically lost over to the front part of the year and there'd be no more additional expenses in those.
Um. Those are correct. Down at the bottom, like filing fees, he was talking about filing fees. If you look at that one, we have, they had budgeted, what? Five thousand?
Yeah.
If I can see that correctly.
Yes.
So they already spent seventy-three, seventy-five. Because they had such a run on people coming in. But you have to remember, like you said.
That the deadline is like for fifteen, so there's nothing else we have. I go, I go first.
Correct. We're still, we're still doing some refunds on some, I think. But that's going to show. What you guys can't see is on the other side, and I put that little note on there, the revenue side also shows whatever that figure is there, the revenue hasn't because it really should zero out. But we have to show it over here in expenses because you have a bunch of expenses. So because of that, he's got a negative, so the percentage pops up to a hundred and forty-eight. So at the end of the year, we make all the adjustments, all of that will come out. We count this stuff out. But if you just follow this bottom number percentage, that kind of tells you where he's at in the year, where he's at now. So he's about fifty percent.
On the, uh.
On target.
On the printing and binding line, where it shows a hundred fifty-seven.
Right.
That is actually our notices and everything, so that line should go with the postage and mailing of fifty-five hundred and you stated it's at six. So those two together make up for the total on that. That, I mean, it looks a little off with a hundred and fifty-seven percent for twelve thousand dollars, but that's because it doesn't look like any of it came out of the postage and mailing. Okay. Um.
Really, don't want to, want to touch more of the way of this education and training, but that's, I assume probably more expenses on that for the rest of the year.
Um, I think we've got everything paid for, for this year's. We still have some training that's going on, but it's already been paid. We've, we've already accounted for that. The books and periodicals, that's going to be part of the, um, of the cost manuals too. We have some others that we do online that aren't showing up there. But the biggest expense on that is the cost manuals. Then the maintenance contract software, that's our, um, our Q public. We have to pay, announce by company to keep our online info out there. And Wing Gap is increasing theirs to thirty-five hundred dollars next year. They, they told us this year that they would not increase it until the next budget year, which is twenty-four, and it's going up to thirty-five hundred dollars a year. Uh, we have a splash top, it's sixteen ninety-nine. That's just for, uh, remote logging on, uh, a laptop if we have to be outside the building. The computer software, this, uh, Thomas came in and updated one of our computers. He told us that all our computers have outdated software on the hard drives and they, that all seven computers in the office need to be updated, but he didn't have money in the budget to update all of them this year, so he updated one. And he was going to try to get some more of ours in twenty-four. Uh, and then again, he may get all of them. He may not be able to. I'm not sure. And that goes with the next line. Now, if we want to go back to the wages, you can see that there's, there's an increase in the wages and that's because I'm requesting the, uh, two extra employees or two more field appraisers.
So it's a little more complicated than he's just requesting. So the state, we've been getting away with this for a long time. So the state, uh, recommends mandated based off how many parcels you have, how many employees you should have to do those parcels. Currently, we're three short, but if Robin includes himself as one of them, we can get away with two, to meet the minimum requirement by the state.
Yeah, they're, uh, they're saying one appraiser for no more than thirty-five hundred parcels, that one appraiser shouldn't handle more than thirty-five hundred parcels in order to do the job correctly. Uh, and, yeah, I tossed it. If I include myself, we're only two appraisers down. But, uh, that's still two appraisers down. In order, what I would love to do is to be able to get those two appraisers to start on map one parcel one and check data on every parcel that we have in the county to make sure that all the data is correct because that's where we have to start. If the data's not correct, the values aren't going to be. And then where that fits us is on our three-year review, which is coming up this year. We have three-year reviews here. Um, if they come in and they find that we're deficient on any of our sales ratio issues or, we have fifteen things that we can be deficient on and that's for residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural, that's the median, the C O D, the P R D, and then the overall. So we can be, we can have fifteen deficiencies. And if the state comes in and says, hey, you have fifteen deficiencies, you've got three years to fix them. If they're not corrected by the time they come for the next three-year review, then they can come in and make the county do a consent order to tell the state, yes, we're going to hire this many people, or yes, we're going to go out and do a revow, which for Mass County could probably be north of a million dollars to do a revow. Um. So then the county enters into the consent order. We have to do that within a certain amount of time or the state will come back and they'll say, okay, well, you've done part of the consent, but you haven't done all of it, so we're going to fine you up to a thousand dollars a day until you correct what you haven't corrected. But no more than what the total of five dollars per parcel would be. We want to try to get ahead of it, but even that is, uh, we don't know until they come into our three-year review. And then that goes in with the two vehicle request. And you can see on the vehicle request, that's under the capital. Um, I got toilets, estimates from, uh, Aitken's Ford and from Bramon Ford, and I have a request out to another dealership, but haven't heard anything back. The seventy-two, four, forty-five is for two, uh, single cab F-150 four-by-fours. They're thirty-six thousand each and that's vinyl flooring, cloth seats and no upgrades on anything. It's just a four-wheel drive work truck. Uh, and even with that, I would still try to find the most affordable thing I can, not just go with the most expensive one, just because it's out there. And I did, I did give y'all the quotes on that.
Any questions for Robin?
The impact alone of two additional employees with salaries, benefits and vehicles. That's a budget implication of what? Quarter million dollars?
Uh, I don't know about the benefits, uh, because that would be, I guess, with Susan.
Um, actually, Tracy's done the benefits. I did, I, and the benefits showing on the form today include, are included based on the salaries of the three twenty-one that's sitting there. I had her go back and calculate what the benefits would be based on that figure.
Right.
That number is.
This should just.
So that's already calculated.
So it's already calculated. Um, looking back at it, probably the, the telephone lines, we would need to add two more there, so you pretty much need to double that.
That's a. Well, you just brought the numbers though. If you go from the twenty-two budget of wages to the three twenty-one, that's not quite a hundred and twenty, and then two vehicles, that's seventy-something, so you're one ninety plus. You know, ancillary, you have two hundred and two and quarter.
The bottom, the bottom line number is starting to increase, uh, to six, to six fifty versus six oh three. It is because you got the forty-five thousand.
Oh, yeah, the forty-five thousand.
So the six oh three, three sixty you're looking at is, uh, and that will be going to be six forty-eight, three sixty, and that is total turnkey.
Yeah. And next year, the forty-five thousand will be something different because there, there'll be a different amount of, uh.
Which is an increase over the year. From four eighty-five to six forty-eight percent.
Yeah.
That's. A year. Hundred and, hundred and forty thousand. Dollar difference between twenty-three and twenty-four.
Just in the process, Rob, just tell me, how do you get from businesses?
How do we identify businesses? Well, the state sends us a list of everyone who pays state sales tax, every business that pays state sales tax. Every business that pays state sales tax. So we get a lot of business from that. And then the only other way we can do it is we'll send returns out to any new business that we see in the county. Some of them come in in January and they're gone by May. And so those wouldn't be able to pick up by next year. It's just what we see when we're out in the county, any new businesses open. We'll make a note of it and come back and make an account and send them a return other than the state sales tax listing that they send us.
We had one coming earlier today and.
We get about five or six a week.
Yeah. They come in asking for business licenses and we tell them we don't have it. Something has changed, changed in the banking industry. If you're asking for a business loan, now that's part of the requirement. Because that's what these people's up against. They already had their EIM number, they already had their LLC, everything's filed with the state and they still wasn't going to be able to get approved for the loan because we did not have the business license. Now granted, we've helped them with the paperwork that we have stating Madison County doesn't offer it. And then we also give them the alternative to go to one of your local cities. But it is something that's.
Actually, in the banking industry, they actually have to hand that before they can open up a checking account.
And that may be what it is, is they're getting a loan, but they can't deposit into the account without showing a business license to back it up. That was the one that just left today.
Yeah, business license is what they've been fixing. Especially at our office, because we would get a copy of business license, we know there's business out there.
I mean, just for us to keep it around, let's not call it a business license. It's actually an occupational tax too, which ties it back to what y'all do. And I know that building permits down there, they do a five-dollar registration fee for contractors that are in the county, but that that is not in any sense, it's not recognized as a business license anywhere at all. But that was just for my information.
Y'all have any other questions?
Oh, the filing fees? You mentioned, what are you talking about it, what someone's doing? Sort of pass through?
Those are all CUBA applications. So when someone comes in and files for conservation in our office, we have to take a twenty-five dollar fee from them. We we turn all of that money and the receipts over to finance. And then whenever we get ready to file those conservation applications with the court of court, we'll request a check back from finance. They send us a check, the check's actually made out to the court of court. It just comes through us because we have the application. So at the beginning of the year, we always have zero, and then at the end of the year, we have zero. And all of those are reconciled with the receipts.
Have you had any applicants for your vacant positions?
We had, I think we had four. And then I pulled a few from the animal control to interview.
So, so you, the applicants you have, they they don't have any of the certification things.
No, and it's it's not required for this position because it would be a trainee. So everything would be, we would train them, and then send them to class. You just enter those right at one trainee.
Sixteen fifty or something like that?
It is sixteen sixty. Now, if we advertise for an appraiser two or appraiser three, then we'll have the, you know, salary increases. And if, we can put it out on the GAO website to advertise for that, but it's going to be tough to get because there's already counties seeking those surrounding us and they pay a good bit more than we do.
And we don't really, it's not going to be any, I mean, you can train and do get the training, then we'd be as well off, right?
And and a lot of times you're better off to do that because we did hire an appraiser three several years ago and it was a disaster.
But that screen doesn't want to relate to these.
Okay.
I reckon, gentlemen, any other questions for Rob?
Thank you.
Y'all need a breather, can I come up? How are y'all?
We old school, we've been doing this a while.
All right, Rob, you don't need to break, you're ready to go. Thank y'all for having us. I passed around some of you guys, we'll look at just a few minutes on the capital overlay. But we can just do like Robin did, if that works for y'all, just go down. If y'all have any questions, you can let me know. We don't really have any major increases in our regular budget line items. There were a few things that we tweaked just a little bit, just because we had a little bit of a shortage last year or we were planning ahead because we know there's going to be an additional expense next year. Like Robin said, there's several things in here we don't control the cost of, so we'll kind of skip over those. For salaries, we're not requesting anybody from part-time move to full-time or any additional position. I always request a cola, because you guys know how expensive it is just to live these days, go grocery stores and things. But other than that, there's not any additional positions or changing from part-time to full-time or anything like that. Susan and I also chatted about adding a couple of line items because we have been, we felt like we weren't properly saving for some things out of line items that didn't really make sense because we didn't have a line item for, say, employee training or uniform. So we were just using a generic professional line item. So you'll see there are a few things that we have added in that weren't there before. So we do have right past the employee pension, our first line item that we did change a little bit with our professional line item. We increased that slightly. I do have an annual report that I have to pay for every year and then as well as background checks, drinks and stage might require. Those things we don't really control. And the price of that, the annual report could always change. It used to be a hundred and fifty dollars, a million years ago, and we have slowly it's gone up to three fifty. They are pretty good about letting us know if there's going to be an increase and they haven't thus far said anything. And their fiscal year starts on July first, so they would have already notified me that it was going to change. But we do have to do the national background check on any new hires. So we always just have a little bit of extra money in there for things like that or if there is an unexpected report or expense. We skipped down, we didn't change anything with the extermination services. We just slightly increased our equipment prices or requests just because the cost of everything is getting so much higher. Where I used to get certain pieces of equipment from Manny Brothers, now it's on us to possibly even go to get anything from there. We're having to look to Amazon or reach out through other wholesalers to finish it, everything's so expensive. Postage as well, there's an increase there and it's been crazy in twenty twenty-three. We still have the mail stuff and snail mail, but we have so many clients and we still, our state requires paper copies of reports just in case something goes down in our system, even though we do everything electronically. But also, we have so many clients, so often when we are trying to turn things in, like for the farmer's market, for example, at the end of July, I had to actually mail that, it was twelve dollars to mail that because we can't scan the size documents. If you're serving hundreds of clients and you have to have three pages per client, the scans are ridiculous. We can't get that to go through it. So then we're scanning, we're doing a million things, so it's just easier for us to mail that kind of stuff. That is why we're still paying into postage. Of course, there's an increase set for that as well. Cable increase, we can't control that, but it is noted on here. Increase in advertising. So here for travel, food and lodging, there is a small, or there is an increase there just because now that COVID has settled down, they will start requiring me and possibly one to two staff members to attend the GGS conferences every year. I used to go all the time, but then COVID happened and so also I was in the season having lots of babies. So all the maternity leaves and things like that, I was able to kind of get out of them, we're doing virtually, but they're going to start being a little bit more strict on that. Most of the time, the state pays for it. The state really helps us out a lot with our office equipment, our kitchen equipment. That's why I'm able to keep a lot of these line items as low as they are because when I need something, once a year, I'm given an opportunity to turn in a wish list or a needed items list and the state typically covers it. They just purchased our brand-new copier. Ours completely died on us and so the county didn't have to come out of pocket at all. And we were looking at almost four thousand dollars. So most of the time, any and all required state trainings are covered. The only thing that would not be covered would be mileage or food or something like that. Typically, they pay a conference fee and often they will pay lodging. They do work on reimbursement system. So there's going to be a lot of times where we have to pay for something upfront, show a receipt and then they send a check to the county. So again, we wanted to allot for that in case we ever did have to come out of pocket for something that we hopefully will be reimbursed for. Susan went up for Chamber of Commerce, we are Chamber members, that's why there's an increase there. Education and training was a line item that we did add. This is different from the training that myself or my full-time office staff might go to. This would be driver training, kitchen staff training. So we are required to send kitchen staff and anyone else that we want to be certified to do a safe certification, thorough face certification in the kitchen. We also are required to do several driver trainings every three years or so. We're fortunate that most of the time, the surface training is offered by the state and we don't have to pay for it. And Tracy has arranged for us to have our defensive driver course done through the county for free, which is great. But we do still have to pay for the past training, which is like a hands-on. We have to do that as an online component as well as an in-person component. So we budgeted for that because in the past, that's one of those we were randomly pulling from the professional line item paperwork. We didn't have a line item. Again, just small increases for supplies and things just based on the expenses that we had this year. Grain house supplies, we up that only because most of the time that stuff's donated and it's amazing. But when it's not, we've got to have the money to cover it. That's one of our best fundraisers and we, you know, average out about thirty-five hundred dollars a year on that in profit. So on the years that we don't get soil and seed, we have to be able to go and buy that. Everything else, we don't really control, we just pull from, you know, what we've been paying, what the totals have been and try to make sure that we plan ahead for that. And then uniforms is another one that was added in. Again, if we need a staff shirt or lettering or something for vehicles or door, we were always just pulling from that random professional line item. And so now we have something budgeted for if we do need something like that. And then our senior center recreation line item, that's just there for you to kind of see. This is what we fundraise for, charge memberships for, get donations for. And we just had this along every single year to make sure we get to do all the fun things that they like to do. This is how we bingo, this is how we trip, this is how we do all the things, craft, everything that we do. So the capital overlay is what really I wanted to talk to you guys mainly about today. Oh, lastly, we did add a computer and a hardware and software line item. There's nothing on software, we don't have anything that we pay for right now on a monthly basis, but we did add some contingency for if and when our computers need to be replaced or repaired or updated because ours are operating on an older system right now. And we've been lucky and able to kind of trade stuff out when it crashes on us with whatever Thomas has in stock. But there's going to come a time where those are going to need to be officially replaced, where we can't keep trapping a band-aid on it. So we wanted to have a contingency there. From capital, it is that time again where I know we all agree and thank you for vehicles. We are great on our wheels-on-wheels vehicles, the trucks, the SUV and the minivan that we have gotten between two thousand and eighteen and twenty-three-one, I believe. They're running great, they're doing a great job. We have them all matched up with our Austin County labels and our grant labels for all the grants that were used in help purchases. They're wonderful, but it's time for shuttle buses. I put this off for as long as I possibly can because it is, it's such a big expense. But we currently have three and you guys have a little sheet in front of you that talks about the three that we have. The one on the bottom is our two thousand and eighteen. This is the one that you guys helped us purchase all those years ago, along with some grant funding. And it is still doing great. It's got about fifty thousand miles on it, running strong and we don't tend to have any issues with it. But the other two, we have a two thousand and six and two thousand and seven shuttle bus. You have photos in front of you of both and for lack of a more professional term, they are trash. And it is time to replace those, they're a liability. They do not function properly, they cannot be worked on or repaired. When something goes wrong, if it's especially if it's a body component on the outside, we have things that are glued together. Things that are racket strapped up and you can't replace it. They're designed to be, they're designed that way, unfortunately. Our road department has worked tirelessly, find parts and if it's been back orders, they've looked all over the internet for trying to find anything they can do. They have done to give us the best use out of these vehicles. But I have one that has nearly two hundred thousand miles on it and one that's creeping up on a hundred and forty thousand miles on it with an array of issues in both. Everything leaks, backup sensors and beefing don't work. We were going down the road back in December to see Christmas lights at the Hancel Gardens. And basically, we always travel in a convoy and so I'm always in the back in the minivan or in one of the smaller county vehicles in case of an emergency. And our shuttle bus, the, not the leader, the one in the middle, the entire back just stopped working. We had no brake lights, we had no running light. And it's nighttime, mind you, in December and we're going down twenty-nine, headed into Athens. So also drivers have a hard time answering their phone when we're going down the road. Then we're trying to blow up seniors' phones, getting someone to get the driver's attention. So since that, we've started driving with two staff members on the bus if we can. We've been very fortunate, anytime we need volunteers to help with a trip or volunteers for wheels-on-wheels, Robin always lends us the people if we need it. Alan always helps us out and gives us folks. So we've been very lucky that we never seem to have a shortage of staff. But we now have to be mindful of that because I can't just have one staff member driving a bus. I've got to be able to get in touch with them if and when something does go wrong on the vehicle from the outside. So I just included a couple of pictures so you could see, there's a lot of wear and tear. These things are extremely dated, they're ugly and they don't represent Madison County well when we're going down the road picking up our seniors. I have included pricing for new models. I have two options, there's two different companies. The first company, I'll have that written, the first company is the one that, the commercial bus sales, they do not have any in stock, but they can have them available this October. The other one on the back, it has the creative bus sales, they have two options in stock. I'm of the opinion that the big three-fifties, the actual shuttle bus is what works best. One of the options from creative bus sales is like a long fifteen-passenger step-up van. There's a step-up, but it's showing to be very narrow and small. That would be great for like summer vacation or for people who are a little bit more mobile and able to kind of climb in and out. But that, I don't think would really work for us. We need big steps, we need lots of room. Sometimes people have their walkers or their pains and our seniors like to travel with seven hundred and fifty persons because you never know when you might need one. So we do, I think, need more room. So to me, the actual buses would be the better option. And like I said, creative bus sales have some twenty-twenty-twos in stock and the commercial bus sales have some that can be available, twenty-twenty-four models in October. So you see the prices for all of those. My request is that we get two, I'm able to take the two worst shuttle buses that we have and the county can do with what they want. We can auction those, we can pass this down to another department that maybe won't need them on a daily basis to transport a protected population. You know, we we can do whatever you saw fit with those that we're bringing into revenue or so that they are continuing to be used in a more safe way where we're not, you know, relying on them often. Alan actually called last week in need of a vehicle to take to the training. And I said, well, we've got the shuttle bus or we've got the minivan. And he was like, I'm nervous to take that shuttle bus. And I was like, I would be too. And we don't want to have a fleet that we're nervous to drive. You know, we want to be able to to use those things and do what we need to do. So it is a big expense. When I bought ours back in two thousand and eighteen, it was about forty-five thousand dollars. And you can see now that they are a hundred to a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So the price is only going to continue to go up. So we do have options. If you guys were to approve the purchase of two, we could do it however you saw fit. We could look at using capital funds for this year to get this done and not have to even have it budgeted for next year. Or we could move into next year. I have grant options where I can help offset some of the costs of this. Jackson EMC is a guarantee. Francis Wood Wilson Foundation, they always help us, they're wonderful. But I have to use the money from Jackson EMC within six months. And Francis Wood Wilson, I can only apply twice a year, in October and in April. And then I have to use that money in a timely manner. So I couldn't go apply right now and show you guys, look, I have this money. It would have to be approved and I would have to be able to put that in our grant application as to what we were doing. Because they wouldn't just give you the money and then you say, oh, the county didn't approve it. That's the house, they won't do that. I even wanted to look into Heart EMC and Rail EMC because they may also come on board with sponsoring us and giving us some, as well as Women of the World, they've helped us too in the past. So I have no doubt that I would be able to get grant money to put back in, you know, to help offset some of the costs. But I won't be able to do like I have in the past where I can say, you buy one at forty-five thousand, I'll raise forty-five thousand because they're no longer forty-five thousand, we're looking at a good bit more money. A thought that I had, and then I spoke with Susan about it and you'll see it down here. I tweaked it a little bit after looking at the mileage on our current vehicles. I would love, you know, if we did decide to move forward with capital money from this year and not to do this next year or whatever you decide if we even should do it, if we could start to have like a vehicle or a fleet line item, even if we put, you know, budgeted thirty thousand dollars a year for this over a five-year period, if it rolls, like if I budgeted thirty thousand dollars and we didn't spend. I budgeted thirty thousand dollars and we didn't spend that this year, next year we budget thirty thousand, we don't spend it, in three years, we have enough, we will always, we will be continually adding money, so every five years, we can make this purchase and we will not have to keep coming to you when we have fifteen-year-old vehicles that are about to fall apart on the road. I think it's smart to plan ahead and have that game plan and then say something were to happen, year two, we've got sixty thousand dollars sitting in that line item if we budgeted thirty thousand a year over a five-year period and one of our Wheels on Wheels vehicles did break down, then we can, hey, look, we've got this right here, we'll go buy a truck to replace this with this money that we have for vehicles and I can replenish that thirty thousand dollars very easily with a grant at any given time. So we're not ever really out money, if that makes sense. Just something to think about, if we were to, you know, make this purchase before the end of this year with capital funds, that's how we could start January with that budgeted, that thirty thousand over a five-year period that rolls. So we don't lose it every year, we would add to it so it would always be there when it comes time for replacing the vehicle. But again, just a thought.
As you were looking at the pricing on the shuttle bus, did you consider leasing?
No, we've never done, we've never looked into that, we've always just considered purchasing just because I assumed, I know I would like to own something outright so we don't ever have to worry about an issue with a contract or something happening and they're not wanting, you know, they're wanting to charge it or something crazy happens, but I'm open to anything because technically you've got the county owns it.
Sure.
You know, not senior center, not me, so we could definitely look into those options. In the, I just have, we'd have to also rent it by the state because they like to be real picky with how they like to come and check out our vehicles and how they provide that money that they pay us, funding for transportation, they're a little bit particular, but I think as long as we checked with them first and made sure we were doing the right thing, it wouldn't be a problem.
Do you know what the miles you average?
Yes, I should have brought that whole report. So yes, so we are averaging, just gosh, we travel, my end-of-month report, we are never short of about forty-five hundred miles a month and that is in all our total, yes, so yeah, so we have total.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, and we really try really hard not to run that third shuttle bus, the O-six is the worst one, we try really hard not to drop that one if we don't absolutely have to. But yes, so we're running a good bit, and this is what we take on trips. And the only alternative to not having shuttle buses would be paying a service for when we do trips and that's going to add up very quickly. By the time you pay a service for a year, to take our members on the passing trips and try to take them to, I mean, you might as well just buy something that we own because it would, it's very expensive to start chartering out with bigger buses and that wouldn't help us with the problem of getting them to and from our actual center because we offer that transportation as well. This is not just field trips, this is daily transportation from their home to the senior center and back, dropping off the doctor, whatever, even whatever we have going on in addition to out-of-town field trips.
How many citizens do we on average serve?
For our, at our senior centers, right now, we, gosh, we have about a hundred and fifty active members at the senior center. And so of those, some do drive in and so daily when we're bringing people in, we're probably shuttling in for the thirty people a day, but when we have field trips, we are doubling that because the people who drive are signing up to go. So therefore, you know, we're having to cap our trips right now often at thirty people between two buses because we can't, we don't trust that third one, whereas we could open up that third bus, they're all fourteen passenger. So we fill them to the brim every time we go somewhere and sometimes we even have to bring folks in with a bus route and then go back out to pick up the second batch and bring them in. So they are definitely being used and that does not of course include Wheels on Wheels clients, our, we have sixteen active Wheels on Wheels clients right now.
Susan, you got these quotes from Jordy Dillit?
Yes, so we've got them, they hold state contractors, other senior centers have used, I reached out to them and made sure that, you know, we were using the right folks and like I said, I don't think we can go wrong either way, they both seem like good companies, one's just in stock now, one will be October, it just kind of depends on the model. I do think we would need to stick with the actual shuttle bus model as opposed to that last book I gave you, which was just that step-up van, it's a little cheaper, that's why I included it, but it's not.
Spring around the back.
Yes, I don't, I think that would be really difficult for clients to navigate their way through once they step up, it's one little step, kind of like on a truck, and then you've got to navigate your way back through there, there's not a big, you know, bus door that opens and I think that we, we're going to need the traditional starlight model.
So we don't actually have any, we don't accommodate any actually handicapped firms? Or we do?
Correct, we do not on for transportation. So the way that we're funded, we're under of course the Elder Americans Act, we state federal funding, they fund our nutritional program, which is where we serve food, congregate clients, senior center members and Wheels on Wheels, so that's totally, and then we also get transportation money, but that transportation money is for accessing services within our senior center or things that we provide and offer like field trips, et cetera. We are not licensed to, expected to, contracted to, or even allowed to provide disabled services like that because we're totally separate fund source and totally separate entity. There's parts of that that are really good because we are not equipped for that, we're not trained for that, that is not, we are not a coordinated transportation system. And you see that in Elbert County and Jackson County, Car County, you know, Hock, you see those where you see the buses, you guys have probably seen them, like our shuttle buses that they say Elbert or Jackson and they're coming through and they're picking up our seniors and they're taking them to and from the doctor in Athens, but we do not offer those services, we don't have coordinated transportation, so we are unable and not funded to provide medical transport or handicapped accessible services. For our senior center membership, we encourage and welcome anyone and everyone, if you're wheelchair-bound, if you need help, if you need the aid, they're welcome to come with you, they have to accompany you and stay with you because we also do not provide those caretaking services in our center. If you are not physically and cognitively able to care for yourself, get to and from the bathroom, transfer from your wheelchair, get your plate, we're not adult daycare, so we have to be very careful that we don't blur those lines because of the way we are funded.
So those services provided by Elbert and Car for those, does the state pay for that?
Yes, this is state-run transportation program like Athens, Arkansas.
So we don't, we don't have any?
No, and it's a fair to create that.
Yeah, I'm not talking about, I was just trying to understand.
Yes, and we do not offer that, we have people call us all the time, I see on Facebook, you do transportation, no, it's not that. For our members, we offer once a month, a twice a month shopping trip or hey, if you need to go to the pharmacy or you drop off at the doctor Athens office, you know, we will make sure that, you know, you are taken care of, if you're a paying member, but we just unfortunately cannot provide that service to any senior in the county. So yeah, we, these buses do not include lift, so that's significantly cheaper than the ones that you.
We don't, we don't need that.
No, and it would be lovely to just have one, but if you have it, you're going to be expected to use it and then that's a liability because we are not funded to provide that type of transportation.
So your twenty-two, the twenty-two actual spent was three sixty-two? The twenty-four request is four sixty-two? So right now you're trending at three sixty-two for this year? So to show you now, that number might not stick, only because right now, I mean, you're doing a good job with being within your means.
Right, right, I just am always trying to prepare for those increases because I know our food costs will increase, everything that we do to operate has gone up and up and up, so I don't ever want to be in the revenue, everybody's dealing with that, everybody's probably dealing with that.
And I'm going to help you out with this, I'm going to reach out and try to give you some numbers on that. I was, I noticed for one in there that they're charging you for the chassis that's under it, under a, what they call a undisclosed option, they charge thirteen thousand, twenty-six thousand dollars because it's in stock.
Wow, well then yeah, we go doctor.
Thirteen-nine because it was in stock is what they're charging. So I'll, I'll have you work on those.
Awesome.
In your, in your plan of your shuttle buses, would you feel secure if they were one replaced? One you just, you don't use, one now and one a year or two?
If we, yeah, if we had to do it that way, I mean, one would be better than none, absolutely, but there's, the two thousand and six, we literally have the hood spray painted, hide the rust, I mean, they definitely, you know, but both of them are, one of them the motorboard, the whole entire computer board needs to be replaced, that's the one that randomly, that's locked in and it'll just go out, so they, you know, it'll still, we'll still be on the road with, you know, we still be having one that we don't trust, so it'll still put us back into having two that we trust, but yeah, I mean, one would definitely be better than none, we could get one this year and one next year, however, but I just, moving forward, whatever we decide, I do think it would be wise to have some type of plan in place so that in five years, when this happens again, you know, we'll be ready and not, we won't be begging for, you know, two hundred thousand dollars at one time.
Remind me what umbrella they had, so are y'all funded?
So it's all under the Elder Americans Act, aging services, everything's under that and it filters down through the state and then it filters down through us. And we've gotten of course a lot of COVID funding, all the emergency funding that they have just been due out of everybody, but the main things that we get paid for are for our nutrition services, which is where we provide meals to senior center members and home delivery clients, transportation services, getting to and from, our possibility for our services. We get a telephone recharge, friendly visiting, we could have a line item, really do that, have they just send checks to the county monthly based on our contract price and then we provide those services. And most of the time we're making money, most of the time like I was talking to Susan, the money that's coming in, we're not, you know, we don't frivolously just spend and do, that money is contracted, it's coming in sometimes more than what we were paying out and they have to call me and do adjustments because we, you know, hey, they up, they up the money that you're getting, we've got to find clients and the federal legislature for older American type stuff, they seem to just kind of hemorrhage that money and we will take it, every, we can, we can get, we'll find a way to put it to use in this person.
Well, under that umbrella, to go to that next level, that is that a transfer under to like federal transit?
Yes, it's a totally different part. And same thing with any type of handicapped, susceptible or disabled adult in the facilities required to handle care, you're looking at assisted living, you're looking at adult daycare, you're going to have to hire some nurses, CNA's, RMs, you have to, it's completely a different fund source.
Would you feel safe, give us some numbers, what grant that she's likely to get per fan?
Just for Jackson EMC and Francis Wood Wilson, I thought we could get at least thirty thousand and I jumped in with Car and Rail, we could potentially get fifteen to twenty more from each of those. I've never applied for multiple EMCs because I don't know the rules on that, but every time that I've spoken with someone, it seems as if it's fair game, as long as those.
Or they're serving someone.
Yeah, as long as they serve, yeah, so it would be Car and, and it is Rail, yes, so as long as they're serving some person in Madison County, we should be eligible to apply. Actually, we have a great track record with EMC, Jackson EMC, every time I've applied, I've been here ten years, they have applied eight of those ten, we get it, same with Francis Wood Wilson, they just are stripped on weekends, they need twice a year, so I have to have that stuff in by October first or April first so they don't consider it. So it'd be the only reason why, you know, I would want to have that on my radar if I do need to get that grant application. But Jackson EMC is an easy fifteen flat unless you are requesting more for a specific reason, which would be totals, I would clearly be able to say, you know. And Francis Wood Wilson also, they normally give me ten thousand, but it's open ends, I can request more. I also last year had our advisory council, our senior advisory council, they transferred over to five oh one three because they are eligible to apply for grants as well. And if it's approved, they will be able to do that also and I can get you an idea of what they're applying for and how much.
Would that work better if there were two vans, two shepherd units?
Well, it just depends, just because it's two different entities, so it, you know, it doesn't, it wouldn't, I don't think it would hurt or help either way because it's two different applications to show a different.
So the EMCs?
Oh, I don't know, I would definitely look into it and see, but, because I would give them a total price, I wouldn't be saying this thing for this, if this would be fleet update, it would be, I would be showing them the whole picture, but I definitely would want to have that information when I apply so I can tell them, we're getting two buses, it is this amount, this is what we're doing, you know, I wouldn't, it wouldn't be two different applications, I would do it all in one, tell them we're trying to.
Capital funds allow potentially be more than twenty-three.
One and twenty-four.
Twenty-four, you could be close.
Yes.
But you have a few seconds here for that grant.
Absolutely, because I can apply about every six months, so once I've gotten it and used it, I guess really twenty years is what it works out to be to get, have that period.
I would say probably once a year, at least one. We look at October and then maybe April. Potentially, potentially twenty-three and then twenty-four. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, October, then negative, we're moving.
And like I said, I can apply to those grants all day long, as normally they're very receptive, they just, they do have to have, because I've done this once before, it helped with the last shuttle bus in two thousand and eighteen, and I've done it several times with our Wheels on Wheels vehicles, but they do have to have the commitment, it can't be me just saying I'm hoping, like it has to be the county has committed, here it is, we need to do this, so that's the only tricky part with trying to get those grant funds to come through for our fleet purchase. Any questions? Well, thank y'all very much. If you know, if you think of something.
All right, Ms. Shelly.
I need to get there.
You're good if you can duck out of there. We need to let, what you call, we have to access between the microphone.
Okay.
I think it's just a plug in.
It's right down the wall, yeah, but I need to screw the borders. It wasn't proud.
Stay lying. It's pretty. It's a little bit hungry. She didn't seem to stay, she's still right.
All right.
All right, I know you probably had your head down a minute ago, but I would just go top to bottom.
Yeah, that's what I think.
There's some of them, you know, that it's just normal.
Yes, well, that is, is normal. We, a big portion is under the salaries where we are requesting new positions. So the scroll down to the wages regular, in this total, we are asking for the following full-time added positions, which is another athletic coordinator, someone to specifically run baseball and softball, we are continually growing, we have a lot of other sports and things that are going on all at one time, so it's, it's getting really hard for just one person to do that. Also in our maintenance side, we're asking for another ground person. So there are two new positions that we are asking for and that's full-time.
Can you update us on how many full-time positions you have now on the office side?
On the office side, aside from myself, we have three full-time positions in the office. And then.
Do I have currently an assistant director?
Correct, it is currently inactive. And then on the maintenance side, we currently have four full-time employees.
Which is really what we've always had, it's four.
Yes, we've always had four, full-time in the maintenance.
And the office side, including you, is four, which is the largest number y'all have had.
Yes.
But yet, there's a lot more going on, don't you remember?
Yes.
And we were able to fill the last position just recently, like a month ago, right?
Yes, Nathan started about halfway through the spring season.
Sure. What are those three positions, quickly?
Our current three office positions, aside from myself, is Athletic Operations Manager, which is Brian, he currently runs baseball, softball, confessions, basketball, any of our new, any cross-country, we're looking at doing football in the winter as well. And then our Athletic Coordinator we currently have is for soccer and volleyball. And then Program Operations is Hollywood, day camp, non-traditional programs, dance, town, you know, all fitness, all of those special events, all of that stuff.
Okay, that's good to know.
Okay. The, and then, go ahead.
Sorry, but the maintenance, is there anybody that, that's the head of the, so what?
Andrew is the head of maintenance.
Okay, and the other three?
And then the other one, Roman, is considered the assistant and then Shane and Steven are under.
Shane, full-time?
Yes.
Miss Steve was, but then you have a part-time one also?
Yes.
Okay. So you're four and a half.
Yes, right now, yes, that's on a different line.
Got you. Is the half won't become full?
I'm not sure yet, he just doesn't know, you know, school-wise and.
I understand.
If it's really what he wants to do, he really enjoys it, but I don't know if it's really what he wants to, wants to do if the T is in school.
But the three positions that you're requesting, you want them just to be half-time?
No, so, and under the, under the regular wages, I would ask for two full-time positions.
One office, one staff.
One office and one maintenance.
The PSC thing, where it says wages part-time based on thousand and forty hours for three new positions?
Okay, and then wages part-time, we are asking for, I had, there's four part-time positions, but one of them is an assistant, a program assistant intern, which is at no cost to the county, it's just an internship that we'd like to advertise and everything like that. So the other one, part-time, is a program coordinator, so someone to help with all of our special events, summer day camp, Holly's working fifty-plus hours a week because our day camp has doubled this summer and everything, so we can start, you know, being able to flex a little bit more with everything we have going on, also just in general with the number of special events.
day camp has doubled this summer and everything. Um, so we can start, you know, being able to flex a little bit more with everything we have going on. Um, also, just in general, with the number of special events we have going on throughout the year. Then a part-time athletic coordinator. This person would be able to assist under athletics, but also, um, we have, I don't know if y'all are all familiar right now, with our PATH volleyball academy that we have that runs out of the old Dinsel gym. Uh, they pay to use the facility. Um, it's a mini club, it's for, um, November to April every year, and then they do like lessons throughout the year. The, that, um, this athletic coordinator position, so potentially, we are looking at the county actually taking over that full program. Um, the coordinator, the owner, Paige Watson, has graduated with her doctorate and is moving to Auburn, Alabama. So, um, she has asked if we will be willing to possibly take that over so that we don't lose that program and what we provide for the county residents.
Which program is that?
The PATH volleyball academy. Um, so this athletic coordinator would also, would be a part-time person, um, but also some of that pay for that would, um, potentially come from the revenue we would add with our.
So you're not going to go after an assistant director because you've got zero there for them?
Correct, not going after one right now.
All right.
We're going to try to get all our staff and everybody situated. And then, um, under part-time, our part-time maintenance, we're asking for another ground person, uh, that would be at twenty hours a week. Part-time, this person would be able to come in, like when we host tournaments and things like that, and work a little bit more than just, um, being, you know, being there every day, just mostly like when we need them, we need that extra help to come in. Any questions?
PATH is kind of like how ECY is set up now. Right, I mean, it's not something that you, our rec department does.
No, it is, so PATH is, um, and you hear about, you have, you have club soccer, uh, club basketball, you know, those type things. So PATH is the club volleyball side. Um, the program was started to assist parents who wanted that club experience for their kids, but at a, at a lower rate. Um, so these girls still get to participate in all the, the SRVA, which is the big volleyball association. They go to all these tournaments, compete in, you know, the old brackets, all that, you know, all those things. Um, but they represent Madison County when they go. Um, they just are not associated with the rec department.
That is a pretty big fee to, to deal with that. It's not like our regular seventy-five, eighty-five dollars.
Correct, so it would still be maintained as that club program, um, which is why we were looking for getting a, um, a coordinator who would specifically manage that, um, at least right now. Uh, Nathan being so new, um, we didn't think it was necessarily a good idea to kind of throw all that on his plate, um, since he's new in the game. Um, but with getting an athletic coordinator, we do have just a good person in mind who has a volleyball background, volleyball back, background, um, if we were able to, to get this position.
Is this what's been held in the old gym?
Yes.
All right. Didn't have, but they use the old gym because they're not part of Madison County, do they pay rental for the gym?
So we would lose that revenue, but we would gain the revenue of.
Entry fees?
Yes.
Gotcha. What would make it no different than it just becoming rec volleyball then?
Um, it's just going to be a higher competition level essentially what it would be. It would not be the regular rec.
You would relate it to kind of like travel ball.
It would be, yeah, essentially the.
Probably in competitive competition.
Yes, correct. They, they play other associations, organizations, um, at like linear volleyball clubs, uh, top flight volleyball, which is out of Jackson County. So they go and they play these other club teams. Uh, we've had them come here and play, so.
We'd have to be very careful on how we word that, because somebody will get rec department volleyball confused with that, and next thing you know, it's on Facebook, and they're saying, they tried to charge me six hundred dollars a summer.
Right, right, yeah, and it's, it's a completely different time.
I get it. So, clearly, and it'll have to be fined. Maybe something we may not even want to entertain and let the next person come in and do the same thing that these people are doing, so we don't have the headache of, you need to weigh the cost there.
Right, well, and that, that was our first option, is trying to find someone to, to officially, you know, kind of take it on from her. Person that we've spoken with at this time right now doesn't have that capability, but still wants to be involved. So it may be the potential that that person would be able to take over later, um, if we were to do that, so.
If that's the case, we need to look at it from all aspects. If it comes under the county, we're going to need to see the, the income side, you know, the revenue side versus.
And after I leave here, we have.
I want to see all of the way down that.
We have volleyball camp going on right now. The high school, so when I leave here, I'm going to talk to Paige, you know, more about things.
Correct, that, they were going to do it at the gym, they had to do that.
Yeah, it's in the high school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But anything, when we're talking about that topic, though, if you're talking about employees for that topic, you also got to factor in, if we don't do this, I'm going to need these amount of employees, not this amount of employees.
Right.
Because we're not doing that. Because if not, we'll get it all confused, thinking, okay, you need seven more people. Well, no, not really, because we decided not to go that way, we don't need three more people.
Right.
See, follow me?
Yeah, so this is, this is best-case scenario.
Okay.
Right here that we're talking about. Any other questions?
Is that over?
I think the same thing, as you're, as you're discussing, as you keep throwing out names, the thing is you have to be careful, the program needs to define the positions that you, that you need to operate.
Right.
Not the personnel that you currently have that you're thinking about.
Right.
The program is defined the positions. Yeah, I guess, I guess my thoughts on it's what's the return on investment versus the number of people that would be participating in it. If we're, and I'm the devil's advocate over here, and I can't play volleyball, okay. But if you're only going to serve, you know, sixteen kids over here, we've got to have a coordinator that's going to cost us twenty-eight thousand dollars a year to do that. That's not much of a return for the other sixteen hundred kids that you've got, which is about the number y'all are serving, and that's somewhere in that bottom part of the range. There, there's not much return there for the dollars being spent for that. Uh, I guess that's what everybody on the table is kind of saying.
Well, you can put the numbers together, we can see it.
Right, yeah.
No problem. It's more of a footnote, side topic, but we didn't.
Don't put, don't put names with it, just.
Right, I give you.
Probably got to do that.
Now, my question on overtime there.
So in requesting the, the additional staff, it's trying to get away from that overtime.
Okay.
Um, you know, we're, we're only in, in June, haven't, um, I don't have the most updated one extended of today, um, for overtime.
For overtime, through, when I pulled in today, you, you spent forty-six, seventy-one, ninety.
Which sounds like about where you're going to be, which you was in twenty-twenty-two, it's seventy-one, seventy-two in the year. That sounds about where you're going to be again this.
Right, um, and that is, you know, again, we don't have, we still have enough, we still have enough staff, uh, to go around with everything that we have going on. Um, the host, last week, hosting a tournament district and state, you know, that, our, our overtime did go up, um, but we also, out of that two weeks, you know, we brought in ninety-seven hundred dollars worth of extra revenue. Um, some of that does help, you know, does offset the umpires and everything like that. Um, but that also brings, um, people to our county who are spending money in tax dollars and everything at the businesses, so.
If your overtime's not unreasonable for the, for where you regular part-time, part-time seasonal salaries you're at, your overtime is still shutting right.
Yeah. Um, this year, we're going to spend a lot more in part-time because of, like I said, our day camp has, has doubled, um, so we had to hire a lot more counselors. Uh, with that.
Your day camp could quadruple.
Oh, I, I.
If we landed it, if we landed it, and if we settled.
We still have about thirty kids on the waitlist, so, yeah, we, we could take a lot more kids if we had the space. So, any other questions on part-time?
Just, just because we're talking about staffing, and we're talking about employees, and potentially they never fill the gaps, has it ever, ever went through anybody's head that maybe we're trying to do too much, too fast? Because I, I sit back and I look at the parking lot.
All right.
And I see what you're doing, and y'all are doing it well, but with what you're doing it with, I think like, as for Madison County compared to the other counties around us, we're offering almost double the amount of sports for half the amount of people.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I'm not saying we need to double the people, I'm saying, should we be offering that much in that timeframe? Are we creating our own evil, I guess you could say, or our own image?
We do, we offer five sports every spring, which most counties around us do, offer five sports every spring. Uh, we do offer, um, you know, cross-country this year is kind of one that's going to run itself essentially, um, by having a, a coach that we're paying based on a stipend, um, and that is covered with the registration costs of, of the participants for that. Are, some of the things that we would love to offer, we haven't yet offered, um, football is something that the school is wanting to be involved with, so we're trying to, to provide that. Um, the, when I said a school, I mean, like the coaches, the high school, Dr. Ketchins and everything want to really be involved with that and want to be a part of it. Um, so they're providing a lot of like the equipment and things like that, trying to get stuff started, um, and encouraging their kids to participate. So, um, I don't, I don't think we're trying to do too much, we're trying, we are trying to meet the needs of the influx of the community that we have. Um, and we're, we're basically offering the regular, you know, the regular sports like everybody else around us.
Okay.
Um, we do offer on the programming side, different than other counties.
A lot.
Yeah. Um, in terms of the fitness and everything, um, and our special events. So we do a lot of those over what other counties around us do.
But that, trying to think and answer what Shelley's saying, the other part of it, you mentioned gracefully, the money that comes into the county when we host tournaments is, one of the things, and, and I, I confess, when I drive two kids to Oakley County for stuff that we don't offer, guess where my tax dollar winds up? So, you know, when we start balance, and there's, it's a real interesting fulcrum that we're trying to balance on.
And most of our, you know, all the additional special events and everything that we are doing, um, we are also trying to partner with other organizations to, to help with that.
Okay.
So.
All right.
All right. Um, we do not have a part-time, semi-personal, um, our part-time seasonal, so that number is very, very high. This is worst-case scenario here, um, with the amount of staff we have. Um, I know on your sheet, um, it's, I have, let's see, twenty-eight, nine, twenty-two for, for nine, that is summer day camp counselors only, because that's what those nine people currently, you know, will make. Um, then I, we have one seasonal staff who makes a little bit more than others, again, due to their, um, uh, tenure with the county, years of service. Um, we have thirty-eight who are just at regular part-time pay, and then we have two that are at a higher part-time rate because of not only their years of service, but also their, um, their skill set in terms of where they're coming for, for from us. And it's day camp only for that. Um, uh, some of this money in part-time seasonal, again, that number is very large, but anything related to day camp, a portion of that money, um, is being covered by our boost grant. So, um, they, they're, we factor in that in, we'll put it in our, um, our budget sheets each month to boost, and they will reimburse us a portion of our summer day camp staffing.
How much they reimburse, what percent?
Um, it just kind of depends. We get twenty-five thousand dollars for the summer to spend, so it's just, it's just however it breaks out, but our total is twenty-five thousand dollars for budget.
Are your seasonal wages, they're pretty likely going to expire at the end of the summer?
Um, our seasonal, yeah.
The stuff falls in that seasonal category.
Yes, anything like the day camp, um.
You're, you're seventy-eight percent right now.
Mm-hmm.
So you, what you're, what it sounds like to me is you can fall pretty close in the budget for this year.
Yes.
So what's your, what's your layout?
Which is where, um, like, when I looked at my last year's budget of what I requested for part-time seasonal was very inaccurate when it got presented to you.
So anyway, based on, based on that matter of what thousand you're being, it looks like it's roughly, uh, roughly okay for this year. And so what you're showing is almost a four X.
Yes.
For twenty-four.
And again, this is, this is us maintaining and keeping the, the current part-time staff that we have. We did hire a, a lot for specifically day camp teachers and everything like that, so those staff will go away after the summer. And then also included in that part-time seasonal position is our, uh, park dependent. Um, we have a, a part-time person who comes in and during the spring and, um, spring, summer, fall season, comes in, cleans the bathrooms, picks up trash, um, all of that. So he is also included in that. Seasonal, by the way.
Alan, I'm sorry.
May I?
Is it food bank with questions?
So the thirty, uh, sorry, can I ask a question?
Yes.
The thirty-eight employees that you have, the scorekeeper, keepers, that's like your high school kids, right, that come in?
Yes, that is, uh, the thirty-eight, that is, that's high school kids, it's also, we have adults who also work in the evenings and come in, and that's just that, that base, you know, the tier thirteen dollars an hour, so it's factored in trying to do the.
And that's a total of five hundred and twenty hours a year.
Per person, so that's ten hours a week.
So you've got thirty-eight employees working ten hours a week?
During the summer, we do. So like, like that, this is like work, like this is, we have everything in the world going on, this is what we're going to spend.
Right, so.
Based on, where is my?
That there, that thirty-eight, but they, you said the majority of their work is during the summer and not during the spring and fall?
No, they're during, it's during the week, during the spring, fall, and winter.
Okay, that's right.
We need to double check those numbers. Something about that, just. Thirty-eight employees, that's only thirteen point six eight hours per person? Is that right, ten hours?
It's roughly ten hours.
Average.
It's an average.
Yes.
Then you're just going to get them to work in one to ten hours a week?
No, I mean, we can, um, but it's, because they're high schoolers, we work around if they're playing sports, because their schedule, college kids when they're having school and everything like that, so we have, we work around all of that. So we can have.
About so many getting few hours, it's just because of.
Yeah, and there's so many things going on. Um, you look at, if we had, do our confession, so during the spring, um, we have lower, upper, and refill it going, we have three people in confession with each of those, that's nine working in one night, plus two supervisors over at Sammy Haggard, plus the supervisor at Refillip, so that's twelve. Then you also factor in the scorekeepers for that as well. So that's just for those two facilities. Um, on average, we have four fills going at, at Sammy Haggard, so right there, that's sixteen staff only for those two facilities. If we also have Ma's, Simon Hill, the old gym going, and the middle school, then that's additional staff. So we can have anywhere from ten, fifteen-plus staff working in one night.
Do y'all run the confession stand at that now?
Um, it does not have any concession equipment. It is our hope, once we finish the renovation of it, to get back to playing some games up there. It is our hope, once we finish the renovation of it, to get back to playing some games up there.
Yep.
Question?
Yeah. I was just saying about part-time seasonal, looking at that compared to where we are in the exact existing budget, or on actuals to date.
Mm-hmm.
And just encourage you to double check that.
Okay.
Because it's, on most sheets, it's three forty-eight, and we're.
It's four times here.
And we're, you know, halfway through the year, we're at seventy. And then July is probably a busy month, but, you know, if you double seventy, that's a hundred and forty. That's still a two-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit.
Well, your day camp teachers are not in- in here yet, are they, in the actuals yet?
Uh, no.
No, they just, when did day camp start?
Well, day camp started in June, so, they started the first week in June, so we're on.
So, yeah.
So, this is almost a full month?
Almost a full month, yeah.
One pay, payroll?
Maybe, yeah, one.
Maybe one payroll.
Yeah, it's in there for our, so, teachers.
Still seems like it's skewed by that. But again, just forty-plus percent.
Yeah.
Just asking, can I?
Okay.
Check that one, I just, maybe spot all of this, just.
I know, it's just, it's, it's kind of.
And maybe, you know, where the thing are hit.
Right, I know, it's, it's a big number, and that's why I tried to break it down, um, for each, because if not, everybody is paid the same.
But you, what did they say, say, Shelley, that we're halfway through the day camp for season right now?
We are, we just started our week four.
So, I mean, we've seen a month, though, so we're going to see another thirty days plus or minus, depending on how the week performs. So, i- if y'all would just revisit that.
Okay. Yes. Um.
Do we have an active, uh, program as far as seeking interns like from, uh, UGA, Emmanuel?
Um, we do have some contacts now for that. Um, I did attend a, um, so UGA doesn't have a Parks and Rec program anymore. Um, they cut both their master program and their, um, bachelor program. They do have a sports management program in which more, most students with that are looking forward to doing more, you know, like, uh, MLB and, you know, stuff like that, management, and not necessarily just recreation. But, um, we are getting all of our contacts that were at UGA went to Clemson. Now, they're actually retiring from Clemson. So, um, we are getting more, um, more con, developing more contacts to be able to reach out, especially in the Canadianology department. Um, I have talked with, uh, Paige Washington with PAST, who has a lot of connections there, uh, with Randy. So, um, and then also Emmanuel College has also, we have some connections there.
Cindy, if I could add, one of the things too, is when you don't have your staff to supervise those interns, you, you know, there's, it's not just free help. There's a lot of paperwork that goes into it. And now that we're beginning to get some positions filled, it'll make it a whole lot easier to attract the kind of student we want. Like, having to see the teacher in French when you don't have a French proverb.
Any other questions? Um, everything, everything else from overtime down is all, uh, numbers that come from Tracy. Um, all right, so legal, professional, we have, um, zero dollars, that's in just the overall county. Um, security monitoring, also that's something that's a yearly thing. Office repair maintenance of office equipment. Hopefully, we don't have to repair our copiers and stuff, um, since we do have a contact on the copiers with that. Um, large repair maintenance of large equipment, this is for tractors, lawnmowers, um, et cetera. I do have a question on that one because it's in our budget, but it's, there's, it's also listed under the vehicle repair maintenance budget. Is that two different?
Well, I think it's, it's actually two different ones according to Alex, because I do question that too.
Okay. Okay. Um.
I think you guys do some repairs and maintenance, am I correct? Or maybe smaller things that happen.
Yeah, yeah, we do more repairs on our smaller things rather than the lawnmowers, we've been a balance.
Right.
And everything.
Okay.
Um.
That, that, the large repair and maintenance, it's up to thirty-five, but you've only spent nine hundred, so it. And I, I know we bought some new mowers.
Yes.
So, I don't look for that number to go up.
Um.
I look for it to go down, or at least stay the same at a thousand, unless you're anticipating something else happening.
I, I wrote all my notes down.
And then we might need to revisit that maybe.
Yeah, because Andrew said, um, a lot of it is for, um, he said mowers. So, now that we're, we've gotten our new mowers finally, officially, then we can lower that number.
Okay. So, we'll just revisit that one. And I'll be honest, Shelley, this is, because you got a really complicated budget, it's complicated. No, it's okay, it's, there's just a lot of moving parts to it. I knew before you got here, we was going to revisit yours just by looking at it.
Yeah.
Bless your heart, we're going to look at a bunch. Matter of fact, I said, this is not a hot mess, this is a, what do I call it, a spicy catastrophe. But anyway.
Yes, so I know, it's, it's going to be a, a long one. Um, then maintenance, um, of office equipment. And I'll be honest, I don't really know what that is for.
It looks like contracts, like it was a contract for your.
The, not the copiers?
Is that for the copiers?
It's probably the coffee machine.
Okay.
Obviously, everybody's just been to the coffee machine when I looked it up.
Okay. Um, because I feel like it doesn't, like, I mean, we get, you know, ink and everything like that, but we've never spent money in that, but I don't really know what that's for.
I, I believe that when I looked, I believe it has something to do with the coffee machine. But I'll make myself a note to go back and pull, like, to make absolutely sure.
Um, repair maintenance of small equipment. Um, the cost of that has gone up on us trying to repair. Um, I think more or less, it's really just, we just need to purchase some new, new wheel gears and such, rather than still trying to repair them, um, all the time. So, we can still look at that number on, on rolling it. Um, the, also the software, um, that's listed twice on my budget.
Um, let's see, okay, you're talking about the maintenance contract software?
Yes.
Okay, so it is, because some things go in, up under IT, and then there were, you have the rec desk.
Uh-huh.
We didn't throw that into IT, and let's see, the other one.
Because I don't have anything listed in IT.
Okay.
But I have three of this line item.
Okay, I'm sure, when I, when I did this one, I found rec desk, a website domain.
Yeah.
And when I worked.
And then my work.
Software.
Yeah.
Okay, then let's go look at, under your other one, make sure I didn't double it.
Yeah, the one down is five thousand.
Okay.
And so, it's fifty-two hundred and then five thousand listed.
That's probably a double.
Um, because I only, I asked for fifty-two hundred.
Okay, you asked for fifty-two hundred.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that was what I had here. So, over here in, um, fourteen, which is the IT, I don't show any money under that.
Okay.
Didn't find any other maintenance contracts that were specific to IT unless you want to.
Right. No, um, on, five down from the other one.
Okay.
It's listed again, or at least on the one that I got.
Okay. You know what, it is. Okay, I think, let's see, why did that come in? It, something got added, Survey Monkey, is that still?
So, we're not doing Survey Monkey.
Okay, maybe that was an old one then.
Yeah, that was what was.
Okay, so we need to remove it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that I'm.
That's why I said I need to look, but this time I will be one blind.
So, I don't think our coffee has, uh, or Survey Monkey.
Yeah, well, it's this line item here, and at the end of it, it has Survey Monkey, but that's a duplicate of that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Um, and then, all right, moving down, the rental small equipment of our turf tank. Uh, thank you for moving back, I was a little bit sure where that was supposed to go.
Well, you know, that all came up when we were doing the twenty-one stuff, they were telling you that.
So, turf tank is for that rental of our painters. Our cellular usage also gets reimbursed by Boost, um, for all of the iPads that we have. Um, the internet service, that's something that's just gone up.
Well, I, I asked, uh, internet service, why, why do we have internet service? What is that for? Because you're supposed to have it through the county.
The cellular or the internet service?
The internet service. Thomas said we shouldn't have anything in that line item because you're tied on to the county fiber now. We done that about a year ago.
I don't know, the only thing I could think of is Wi-Fi. I, I honestly have no idea.
Yeah. Well, To- uh, Thomas said give it him because he don't, he don't think.
Well, we need to pull that.
We are, we're paying for something that we've got free from the county.
Right, because those are num, those are things I don't actually see, I just get caught up with it, but it's how much you say in this line item.
And something is coming out of that line item every month, so we'll need to go full.
We may be paying for charter, but last year when we run the new fiber to the jail, we picked up the rec department.
Right.
And charter wouldn't contact us this time.
So, maybe, maybe we're being billed for something that's shit.
Correct. Fine.
So, we haven't used any Wi-Fi, but.
Well, we got Wi-Fi.
We have Wi-Fi, yes.
But it's, it comes off the county line.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, though, that the fiber that's running up there, where the Wi-Fi is coming from?
Correct, it's coming off the county fiber.
Okay.
Not charter's fiber. We shouldn't be buying it from charter.
Well, okay, yeah.
Okay. Um, posted mailing fees, um, we can actually drop that. Um, we don't send them out to anything, um, if anything. And our field box rental is, um, up ninety-seven, you know, ninety-six dollars.
Ninety-four bucks or something?
Ninety-four dollars, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, this year, um, so we can drop that to a hundred dollars to cover that. Um, I guess we try not.
You're not going to mail any checks?
We're going to, we don't mail, we try not to mail anything.
Right.
Um, we try to have everybody come pick them up. Um, advertising, we can also drop that one to fifteen hundred. Um, the, where's the Fourth of July parade and Christmas floats? Um, we actually are now letting our, um, our, the parents of teams that win tournaments and everything, um, they're the ones that are now, if they want to be in the parades, then they decorate and do all of that, um, for that. And then we just provide the trailer and, and drive them in it. Um, travel, food and lodging, um, this is at five thousand. Um, again, this is not planning on getting the scholarships that we are going to apply for. For that, this is for conferences, it's for, um, anytime our teams go to, end up going state tournament, then we send representatives to be there for that. Um, training that may require a one-night stay, those type of things. Um, perseverance law is zero.
Travel, food and lodging is way over what's been, been spent so far. Right now, I mean, you're not even at fifteen hundred dollars.
Um, this year, our conference is in Athens, so we're not going to be spending any money for housing or anything like that. Um.
You, you have it on, um, you have, year-to-date, they spent sixteen seventy-four.
Sixteen seventy-four, I suppose I'd write it at fifteen hundred, but sixteen hundred dollars. But you're looking to do, um.
Um, because, uh, this year, we didn't, we're not spending money for conference.
But next year you are.
But next year we will, it will be in Columbus.
I got you, okay.
Yeah. Um, and there is a scholarship for that too as well. Um, dues and fees, um, I did provide a sheet for that. Um, this is based off of what we've kind of done, um, last year, what we're looking at, or what we've done this year, so kind of projecting where our kids are, um, on the number of teams that we, um, enter each season, and then the projection on how well they've done, and, and the, and actually budgeting for state, uh, tournament entry fees. Dues is just our regular GRPA state and, um, district dues. Education and training, there is also a sheet for that, um, with workshops, um, trainings, cost of that, staff, sending staff, um, how much that would be. Our conferences, conference rate has increased as well, um, it's been about fifteen years since they have increased these more longer. Um, coaching official certification, this number, um, is fifteen hundred. On my sheet, I had, um, broken down into two separate line items. Um, one for coach certification and one specific for official certification. Um, that was for soccer, trying to get more soccer officials. We, we're done really good with baseball, softball, volleyball and basketball, and getting, uh, umpires and officials, but soccer, we're, we're kind of lacking. So, we were looking at the option of, um, if we pay, if we had good soccer knowledgeable people and pay for their certification, make them required to work, you know, at least a year or so with us. And if they don't, then they have to reimburse us for what we've been trying to encourage, um, more local officials to come out. Um, but that's why it's still fifteen hundred dollars, uh, because that's the total. Um, and for the, um, coach certifications that we do require for our coaches. Um, contract labor, that number, you know, a thousand dollars, it's also based off of our other program that we pay instructors. Athletic officials, this number is very high.
Is that going to be right, though, contract labor, because?
We, so, and this is going by years ago and talking with Kathy. She said whatever that number was, it didn't really matter because our contract labor, they came out of the revenue, like they were paid out of the revenue that we made. So.
I mean, I guess, we look at it that way, we got to look at every line item the same way.
Right.
So, I would put it back.
So, really, it's going to, that line is going to be.
So, it's.
It's a whole heck of a liar.
Okay, so is it closer to, I mean, yeah, twenty-two, you could spend about eleven thousand.
It's going to be closer to that, well, and we've added more programs, so it's going to be closer.
That's the number we need to be looking at, because we try to look at it the way you, that one particular line is, we'd have to look at, it would miss it all.
And that's the only reason I put it, so that's just what Kathy told me.
Perfect. Just to understand, thank you.
Um, athletic officials, that number is very large. Um, we have spent almost, actually, forty thousand dollars, we haven't gotten billed for last week for, um, umpires and everything. Um, but for this year alone, we have spent quite a lot of money. Um, there is some talk with our league on, um, trying to help offset those costs by maybe charging a small admission to games, maybe a dollar or something like that, uh, to regular season games. But that's a league decision, we haven't done anything like that. Um, I know that's a, that's another discussion, but, um, but getting people who are certified and getting them to come out here, you know, we're having to pay for it. Um, and this is about, our baseball, softball, we're about fifty bucks a game. So, you're looking at two games a night, two umpires, so that's two hundred dollars, um, for one field, um, then a night, so. Um, the solid waste disposal, um, we're, you know, trying to get that as low as we can by using the, all of the county services. Uh, recreation for, or Fairbey's Recreation Building, um, yeah, that is. Um, repairs that we may need to do, that's for the, for the office and, and everything. Hopefully, we won't have to replace another air conditioning or anything in that there. Um, recreation grounds, this is our true green, everything, uh, that we already have for all of our parks, um, and just basic ground, uh, repair. Uh, repair maintenance and rec, other structures. other structures, this is civilian, the dining cages, um, I'm gonna say, we use it for, for the old daycare gym when we have things, for the splash pad, all of that stuff basically falls under those other structures, line item.
All right, uh, Shelley, can we just?
Yep.
Stop right there, because we're gonna have a meeting at six o'clock.
Yep.
All right, this way, you got a cut line, if you want to go back and just double check the, the rest of the numbers before we go through them, and then that way you can clear up the first set of numbers.
Okay.
We'll know where to start, and we can do a brief recap on the numbers you've changed, just make some kind of special star out beside it, so we know what you've changed, uh, but just want to give everybody time to go to the bathroom before the six o'clock meeting starts.
Just a couple other comments before y'all leave, because the complexity of what, what you're presenting here, and then also, one thing we do not see is, is red.
I have, sorry, go ahead.
We need to see that, because that's a, that is unlike a lot of your, a lot of departments, that's a component of what makes a difference here, so we need to, we need to see that while we're seeing this. And just, and again, just a couple of comments, and, and go back and look at this carefully, because your proposal is about roughly five hundred fifty thousand dollar increase, about twenty-three thousand. In fact, sixteen hundred students served is correct, and you're looking at a thousand dollars per student served, that's what the cost per, that department there is going to come, if that is, if that is correct. Again, so we need, we need to make sure that's right, and, uh, see how much that has offset my revenue that's generated as we have.
And how much?
On your, uh, equipment, just while I'm putting up everything, on that equipment, I saw lawn mowers and stuff, was that old quilt, or is that for new ones that on top of what we've already got, that we just received? I just saw some equipment around, I know we just bought.
The only one, uh, it is for a, and it's one more lawnmower, and then a new pro gator, and then the top dresser actually goes on the pro gator.
The gator is different, from the gator we just bought?
It's completely different.
Okay.
Shelley, uh, it's, we've got a line item for turf tank, and then we've got a line item for spraying pesticides.
And varies.
Variets and stuff like that, spraying.
So our turf tank is our little automated painter that we, um, purchased, does all the soccer field lines and.
Were, were ready for that?
Yes, sir, it's a rental agreement. Instead of buying it outright, um, it was a rental agreement, because it, it comes with a, um, pretty much paint every year that they provide.
When we done that deal, we looked at the cost of what we were paying for paint and the labor, we were, we were saving thousands of dollars.
They have staff, they have someone that does this, someone like, oh, GTS on it?
Yeah, you just push a button and it does it.
It's GTS brand, so it lays the bills off and it's like a fire.